Good morning and welcome to the November 12 County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly. And if you need a listening device, you'll have to catch Robert as he runs out the door.
Too late.
Too late. Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any additional articles? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of October 28, 2014. The joint minutes of October 28, 2014, and the canvassing board minutes of November 7, 2014.
Can we approve these all together? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Is there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $543,178.73.
Is there a motion for the bills?
I'll motion to pay the bills.
Second.
A motion and a second on the bills. Are there any comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Just a couple things. We paid 55 grand to the state for signage and the highway department and 71,000 for shingling.
And the shingling was a hail issue that was reimbursed by insurance. So, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The juvenile detention center's statistical report for October 2014 and the Minnehaha County Sheriff's report for October 2013. They have been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. The next item is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Is there a motion on the routine action?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Are there any questions for the carry this morning? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for November 2014. Carrie Dever.
Good morning.
Good morning, Carrie.
I have about six anniversaries for you this morning. Three people who are celebrating five years of service. Darryl Jonas, who's a road maintenance team member at the highway. Grant Edgcombe, who's a custodian at the museum. And Bill Wilson, who's the custodial supervisor for facilities. We also have Michael Tushen, who's a road maintenance team leader at highway, celebrating 15 years of service. And Jeff Gromer, our warden, of course, who's celebrating 20 years of service. And Gary Murrah, who is a senior building facilities maintenance technician, who's celebrating 25 years of service. So, a lot of longevity in that short little list. Unfortunately, I don't think we have any of them with us today. They're probably hard at work.
Yeah. Well, we thank our employees for their longevity with us. It's great to not have to turn over on the expense of that, too. So, thank you.
Item C is to recognize volunteers and county government for October 2014. Carrie Dever.
Another long list, over 200 volunteers. 228 for October. So, fantastic.
I think we had a lot of volunteers over the election period and makes all of our jobs much easier to have those people help us out. So, a thank you from the commission, too, from the volunteers of Minnehaha County. So, thank you. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item is notice and requests. Consider a motion to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of public hearing at 9:15 a.m., December 2, 2014, in the county commission meeting room, county administration building 415, North Dakota Avenue, to consider a resolution to modify the county highway system. DJ Boothy.
Let's computer up.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothy, highway superintendent. I have a map in your packet. I was hoping to put it up here, but the computer's turned off. So, there is a map that's about three quarters of the way through the packet. This item is a notice of a public hearing. The public hearing is going to be held in a couple weeks. And I'll try to keep this as short as possible, but still give you the information that's important for this notice. This is the first time that we've done this in decades, and so I don't think that any of you have been involved in one of these processes before. But every time that the county highway system changes, we're required to pass a resolution and provide that resolution to the State Department of Transportation. And then the State Department of Transportation considers that resolution and decides whether or not to incorporate that into the official highway map that is kept on file at the Department of Transportation. And while we did make several changes to the county highway system over the past several decades, this procedure was never completed. And so, we're doing a lot of cleanup. As you can see on the map there, there's several bold lines. In fact, there's 26 bold lines that are colored for deletion, which I believe is the blue. And then there are four colored lines, which are the additions, which are the green lines. And also in the packet are narrative summaries of each one of those locations. The total for deletions, the total length adds up to just over 30 miles of highway system that's currently on file at the Department of Transportation that we actually don't have any jurisdiction over where, like, for example, in the middle of Sioux Falls there, you can see there's a few several mile stretches where we're not maintaining it, of course. The city of Sioux Falls is maintaining it. So, like I said, this is really a cleanup. The public hearing that's going to be scheduled will provide for public comment. Maybe some municipalities will want to come in and speak their opinion on our proposals. I know for a fact, I've been in contact with all of them, but for a fact, the city of Brandon, they do have issue with Holly Boulevard, which is the west part of Brandon. And so, we've worked through that. And Brian Reed and I have had a couple different meetings about that. And so, they might come and voice their opinion on it. I'm not quite sure yet, but I will try to keep you posted if I do find out for sure. So, you guys have any questions right now on the notice of public hearing?
Are there any questions for DJ on this? This is just to consider a motion to authorize the county auditor to publish notice of a hearing for December 2.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, DJ.
Item eight are planning and zoning notices. For first reading, authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider zoning text amendment 14-04 to allow the keeping of fowl in the RR Rural Residential District, Article 4 of the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. David Heinel.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Heinel, Planning Department. We received a proposed text amendment from property owners based off of the complaint. This is to publish notice for a public hearing on December 9, 9:15 a.m., to allow the keeping of fowl in the rural residential district as a permitted special use. This passed the Planning Commission with a vote of four to one. So, if there's any questions, then actually we need to be taken to publish notice for that meeting two weeks in advance of the meeting December.
Any questions for David? I'm looking for a motion to authorize the county auditor to publish notice on December 9 on a keeping of fowl issue.
That didn't sound right, but I'll second it. I'll make that motion on the fowl issue.
On the fowl issue. I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, David.
There are no petition for compromise of lane. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when anyone can speak on an issue that is not already on the agenda. I'd like you to keep your comments to around five minutes if possible. Is there anyone who would like to speak? If you'd come to the podium, identify yourself, your name, and your address for just part of the record. You might have to pull the microphone down a little bit. Thank you.
I'm Connie Morgan, and I live at 916 South Grandview Avenue. It's on the east side. I want to ask about when the districts get changed for voting and stuff, why it is we don't get notified.
Okay. Has anybody got any answer for that?
I would suggest Mr. Litz is the one to answer that question.
I don't think the auditor's here. Bobby, did you hear her question?
I did.
Can you come up and give an answer? Otherwise, this is public comment, and we can address these issues later if need to be.
I believe the question was when districts get changed, why is not the public notified? And I think what she's referring to is when the different types of elections come out. Is that correct? As opposed to...
No, I was changed from District 14 to District 25 without any notification.
Well, I think that, you know, I'm going to go back to what Mr. Barth had talked about here last week, and that would be the wrong ballots. Because that's, is that what you were talking about? Did you get a wrong ballot?
No, I didn't get notified. And it's through other connections I found out about it, so I know which candidates to study upon to vote.
Well, at this point here...
Auditor, let's just stick to her question specifically.
Without being able to investigate what she's asking about, I really don't have a good answer for you. So, I would invite you to come down to the auditor's office or go down there and see Heather, and she will...
You don't know what the policy is on that? Is that a county policy or is that a state policy to not know the facts?
Well, I guess I'm a little confused about exactly what you're talking about. As you said, districts, which are legislative districts, or it could be the city districts. So, if you would like to come down to our office, we'd be glad to research it and tell you what we know about it. But right here, right now, I'm not prepared to answer your question adequately.
I think it should have been answered here.
Thank you, Connie. Is there anyone else who has a public comment for this morning? Seeing, oh, excuse me, I have another one. You have to identify yourself and your address, please. Pull the microphone down, too, please. Pull the microphone down a little bit, please. Thank you. Yes.
Lori Stacy, 120 South Lindell Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And I am the state chairman of the Constitution Party of South Dakota and two-time statewide candidate for Secretary of State of South Dakota. I'm here to discuss, and it may take more than five minutes, but I'll try and read fast, some of the observations and comments that were made by Commissioner Jeff Barth after his canvass and audit of the Minnehaha County election process. It is my opinion, first of all, I agree with him that he referred to and used the words illegitimate election. I would totally agree with that. And I've brought some observations, preliminary observations, that I have made going over various reports that reported throughout the state and throughout Minnehaha County that occurred on November 4. First of all, there is, there were state and federal election laws that were broken, not only relating to Minnehaha County, but also Pennington County and Shannon County. The entire statewide election really is in question, and I will cite some of the reasons why I say that. In violation of willful ignorance by Secretary of State Jason Gant and Attorney General Marty Jackley, two additional statewide candidates officially received the nomination of the Constitution Party of South Dakota. The two elected officials refused to obey state statute 12-6-9, which clearly states that unopposed candidates of a state political party in South Dakota are not allowed on the primary ballot because they are automatically considered the nominees if they ran unopposed. All of the petition requirements for running for federal office and governor refer only to being able to get on the primary election ballot. Therefore, when the deadline to turn in those petitions to get on the primary ballot for U.S. House and governor passed, and no other CP candidate had opposed them, I, as the state chairman, in accordance with my mandatory duty as such, sent a certification letter to Jason Gant officially certifying Charles Hawn of Watertown for U.S. House and Curtis Strong of Rapid City for governor as our official unopposed nominees. Instead of putting them immediately on the general election ballot, both of these state officials absolutely refused to obey state law. Number two, there was widespread voter suppression intimidation reported at numerous precincts throughout the state. Reports of police, sheriff's personnel, and/or their patrol cars parked at precincts in a very visible way, such as parked in the first row of precinct parking lots so they could be seen clearly by voters that were driving up to the polls. This did not just occur in Shannon County. Patrol cars were also observed at polling places in Sioux Falls. Federal law states, "Any officer, whether civil or military, who 'orders, brings, keeps, or has under his authority or control any troops or armed men at any place where a general or special election is held unless such force is necessary to repel armed enemies of the United States shall be fined under this title or imprisoned not more than five years or both, and be disqualified from holding any office or honor, profit, or trust under the United States." Number three, national and local media called winners in the U.S. Senate and governor races while some polls were still open within the state. This is a violation of both state and federal law. South Dakota state statute 12-20-17, returns not disclosed until all polls in state closed. No public disclosure of the returns of state and federal elections in any primary or general election is permitted until each precinct polling place in the state is closed. This provision applies to each precinct polling place within the state. Number four, Shannon County voter suppression and inaccurate interpretation of federal law in order to not count last, late cast ballots, complete neglect of proper chain of custody procedures for the security of ballots. Why was an elections official allowed to retain ballots at their home, thereby breaking all acceptable chain of custody procedures for the security of those ballots? Were these absentee or early voting ballots that had already been cast? Were they blank, unsecured ballots that could be compromised and used for ballot stuffing purposes? How long were these ballots kept and set officials' private home without supervision by any other parties? Hours, days, weeks? How many other counties use the same procedure? What is the probability of such a fiasco innocently happening in the first place? Attorney general was quoted in media reports regarding the ballots that had to be cast after normal poll hours due to suspicious incompetence could only be counted upon a judge ordering them to be counted according to federal law. Well, this is not what the federal law says and appears to not be a reasonable interpretation of said law. According to federal law pertaining to the casting of ballots under normal state polling hours have closed, the ballots are yes, to be set aside, and then they are to be treated completely separately, but in the same manner as any other provisional ballots cast, i.e. verification of eligibility to vote, verification of eligibility to cast their vote at the proper precinct, et cetera. This is according to Title 42 U.S. Code, Section 15482. Number five, voter suppression in Sioux Falls. In my own precinct here in Sioux Falls, this was the third different polling place in the last three significant elections. Notice must be sent by law to all registered voters affected by change in their polling place. The last two elections, my own address, received only one notice each time addressed to a family member that is registered to vote and only a few days prior to the election, which is the latest possible time for notice under the law. However, I have yet to receive a notice of either change in either of the last two elections as I never received one. Apparently, many other voters in Sioux Falls did not receive one either. Judging by the reports that were widely reported of voters running around Sioux Falls going to the wrong precincts, well, no wonder. They must not have gotten a notice either. It is not even possible to know how many voters gave up because they did not have much time to go to the correct precinct after possibly waiting in line at the first one. Number six, recreating ballots in Minnehaha County. According to state statute, disputed ballots are to be handled in the following manner. State statute 12-20-5, count of votes for candidates, scrutiny of ballots by precinct deputies, decisions on disputed ballots. The votes for the several candidates shall be counted in the order in which the candidates occur upon the ballots. At least two precinct deputies of opposite political parties shall scrutinize each ballot with the precinct superintendent, acting to break in a tie vote of the two precinct deputies ruling on a ballot. As the vote is announced, two precinct deputies shall make the mark required on the tally sheets. The use of the word term tally sheets clearly means that a disputed ballot were to be hand counted. It does not mean that any ballot was to be recreated so they could then be fed through the scanner. The recreated, i.e. forging, fabricating, or tampering of ballots is preposterous. How many other counties in South Dakota followed this outrageous procedure on election night as if it was standard practice? I think we, the voters, want that question answered right away. It is a violation of federal law for a person, including an election official, who in any election for federal office knowingly and willfully deprives, defrauds, or attempts to deprive or defraud the residents of a state of a fair and impartially conducted election process by the procurement, casting, or tabulation of ballots that are known by the person to be material, false, fictitious, or fraudulent under the laws of the state in which the election is held. Now, on this matter, when the Minnehaha count for hours and hours, we weren't getting any numbers being reported. As the state chair of the Constitution Party, I did come down here at 2:30 a.m. that morning to find out what in the world is going on. Bob Litz had just portrayed on the news and in person that the voters really messed up the ballots. He quoted such things as macaroni and cheese on them, scribbling all over the ballots. That just wasn't what I ended up seeing that night when I was allowed to come in and take a look at what the process was for processing these ballots. The clear intent of the ones I saw of the voter was definitely there. Voters did not mess up the ballots so bad because there was a, quote, "full moon." Many of the ballots had a peculiar dot on them, a perfect dot centered perfectly in the middle of one of the ovals under a candidate's name. Now, the problem with assuming that that was made by voters is just defies all logic, especially when the particular ballot that I saw with this perfect dot and the perfect center of an oval was definitely made by a different type of ink. The voter used a black felt pen that most voters around the state were, had found at the polling place to vote with, yet this perfect dot was obviously not a blank ink pen mark and looked a lot more like a computer-generated anomaly. So, the only logical conclusion I could come with, given the unusual activities that night, the appearance of a dot on many ballots in a perfect position, et cetera, and the fact that another poll worker there that night said that a lot of the ballots had this peculiar dot on them. I just think there are way too many problems, too many laws that were broken that night. And I think that at the very minimum, a new election should be held in Minnehaha County based on my observations, Commissioner Jeff Barth's recommendations, and thousands of people around South Dakota that are finding statistical anomalies in the final reported vote counts. And we're just not buying it, folks. These numbers are way out of whack from polls, from historical data, et cetera. And so, I am asking you to please reconsider and look at our final vote counts. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Are there any other public comments? Bruce? Just identify yourself again and your address, please. Thank you.
Bruce Danielson of Sioux Falls. The other day, I was here for the official canvass, and I appreciate what Lori Stacy's just been talking about because I was one of those people that was working here for most of the, most of the election day. I spent about 23 hours hanging around the courthouse doing different things. And I enjoyed being part of that process. The reason that I got involved in the process on election day is because I've never trusted the machines, just flat out. I came up in the process of voting and helping in polling places back long before we had machines to be involved. And we had, as we used to call the, the blue hair set that used to sit there until 2:00 in the morning if necessary, making sure the voter intent was, was as correct as possible. And then the official canvass was brought into the process to make sure that they hadn't made any statistical mistakes or counting mistakes. Though we're past those days, and we now have machines that are part of the process. In the past, we've had four machines that were tabulating. The four machines were able to keep going and moving the, the information through the process very smoothly with the resolutions board. I've now been on the resolutions board several times, and I really enjoy this part of the process. And when Bob asked me to be part of it at about midnight the other night, I was very happy to, to take part in it because I want to make sure that the concerns Lori has and the rest of the people have and to also solve my irritations with the system are handled. And I gave out a, a printout to each of you the other day, and I hope you've had a chance to look at it. And I've made a few others if anybody here wants a copy of it. But it's my observations from having been involved in elections for the last 48 years. And what I saw the other night, I was, I was reasonably proud of what, what had happened the other night. It was, it was, it bothered me that it took so long to get it, and I understand why the machines. I'm involved in computer technology. I understand why those machines spit out the ballots. There were about 600 that got spit, spit out directly that the resolutions boards had to take care of. And the mysterious dots, we began to see, at least we were able to start figuring out what had happened with those mysterious dots. And they weren't all in the same slots. They weren't all in any way that you could say anything other than, having been in the voting booth as many years as I've been in voting booths, you set your pencil down in the past going, okay, do I want, do I want Cindy, or do I want Jeff, or do I want Dick, or do I, you know? You set it down and you go, oh, that's right, I wanted this one, then I want this one. And so, you, the pens we were using, they left a mark, just a little tiny dot. And having gone through all the ballots that I went through as my part of the resolution board, we never had a disagreement when we saw there was definite voter intent to say that they wanted Lori Stacy versus Chantel Krebs. There wasn't any dissension if they wanted Jeff instead of Cindy. You know, there was never any of that in any of the boards. And I looked over the shoulders. In fact, I helped some, some newbies the first time that they, either of them had been on the board. I stood there with them for probably the first half hour to hour, just watching them, helping them, you know, through that part of the process so they could see what's going on. I have, I've had the ability in the years past with the older machines, when I was standing there, because of the work I do, I could see anomalies in the ballots, you know, that there were problems with certain types of ballots. And always brought it to the attention of Rich or whoever was running the equipment to take, I think about five ballots back, there was a problem, and they would pull it up and we would work with it. there was a problem, and they would pull it up, and we would work with it. And it would go to the resolutions board to be satisfied. I love the process. I hope to be involved in helping solve this issue that we've got. Overall, one of the things that, a few things that I have noticed that I would like to put on the record is that I don't believe in voting centers. I don't believe by having 16 or 20 voting centers versus the 71 voting locations is advantageous, especially in an urban area like Sioux Falls where people are used to walking to vote. The idea that somebody went and voted at the city election, and they go back to that same church or whatever location it was, and there's nobody there to take their ballot, and so they start driving around town trying to figure out where they're supposed to vote. I think that's absolutely wrong. I want the 71 locations or whatever is deemed practical to make sure the process is correct. I've had one concern from the time the contracts were let for the new tabulators. I was disappointed that the new tabulators were brought in before this election without any chance to be able to test the equipment in a small batch like the school board election. That would have, to me, would have been a better solution, but the contract was let, the machines were here, I know the staff downstairs, and I've worked with them enough elections to know that they did the best job that they could do under the circumstances. And you can't think of all of these reasons why a ballot would be marked wrong. There were minor training issues. There always are. I didn't see anything in my watching the ballots go through these new machines that made me scared that the vote was off. The work I do, I watch thousands of lines of code go in front of my face, and I can see anomalies. Something doesn't look right, and you go back and you try and find what didn't look right. And I watched those machines. And that's what I did for a big chunk of the night before I was asked to be on the resolution board. We had people that had to go to work because it was an all-night process. I was hoping it wouldn't be. I thought Bob had a good plan doing the absentees first because in normal years, you want to get those out of the way right away because there's usually so many problems. Well, when you have ballots that are folded multiple, multiple times, and you see some of these ballots where people have actually put five creases in it to get it into some kind of an envelope, or they're upset, or whatever their reasons are, I saw the food stains, the coffee spills. One year, we actually had some kind of sticky substance on the ballots. So you have to take those ballots and recreate them to make them work. We try very hard, Laurie, to make sure that those ballots are correct. We have some issues with state law that need to be addressed and corrected in a lot of different ways. So one of the things I would just like to ask is when we get into this part as a commission and make suggestions for the way we vote and the way we handle things in South Dakota, that I would like to be able to come back and talk about it and help the process.
Thank you, Bruce, for your comments.
You bet. If you had any questions at all about any of the information I've given you, please feel free to call me.
Okay. Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to talk during public time? Seeing no public input, we will move on with the regular agenda.
Regular business. Excuse me. Item 10 is a public hearing on proposed project for the Augustana College Association and the issuance of Economic Development Revenue Bonds to finance such project and permitting reimbursement of certain project costs from bond proceeds. Sherry Roder.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sherry.
This relates to the resolution passed by the county in October to proceed with tax-exempt pass-through bonds for the benefit of Augustana College. In order for the bonds to be tax-exempt, the IRS regulations require an opportunity for the public to comment, and this is that opportunity.
Okay. So are there any other proponents that would like to speak? Are there any opponents? Excuse me. Ken?
You're a member of the public?
We have had several questions, you know, come up about this. You know, I've had comments from the public that says, well, why is the county issuing these kinds of bonds, you know, if you've got other projects? And I just want to make very clear to the public in that these bonds, you know, Augustana College is simply taking advantage of an opportunity to use some tax exemptions and some bank-qualified bonds that we are not, you know, going to use this particular year and that because we have no plans for this year. This is not an obligation that we are responsible for or to make payments on or anything like that. And I just wanted to make that clear because we have had those questions pop up in the office.
Thank you, Ken. Are there any other proponents that would like to speak? Are there any opponents that would like to speak? I do not see any opponents. Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Barth?
Ms. Roder, so what other steps need to happen? Is this the last step, or are you going to come back and see us three, four more times?
One more time. One more time, and I'll try not to let my nerves get to me on that occasion. Next week, we will come before you with the final bond resolutions to ask for your final approval, and that will be the last step and the last time we will be before you. And we do appreciate the opportunity for the college and your time.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
We don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion.
Okay.
We don't need a motion. Thank you.
Item 11 is to authorize the Sheriff's Department to purchase one Dodge Grand Caravan from Billion Auto Sioux Falls in the amount of $20,824 from contract number 16674, competitively bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota.
Hi, Lieutenant Rod Axel with the Sheriff's Office. I am here for Kristen. She is unable to come today, but we are requesting to buy this Dodge Caravan. It was actually approved in the 2014 budget. Finally, got bid, and we know which one we actually want to get now. The final cost is $20,824, and that's right here at Billion Auto, and we'll make arrangements to pick up.
Okay. And this is a budgeted item. Are there any questions for Mr. Axel?
Move approval. Say it.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12 is consider a motion to declare a 1980 Star Lab from the Suland Heritage Museum as surplus for purpose of trade-in and to authorize the purchase of a new Star Lab from Science First in the amount of $12,850. Bill Hoskins.
Hi, I'm Bill Hoskins, Director of Suland Heritage Museums. Star Lab is one of our top programs. We actually do have two Star Labs that are sometimes in use, such as today, at the same time. What we're requesting is to surplus the 1981. This is one that was given to the museums by the Junior League. It's been in use. It was sort of, it was our frontline unit until 1997 when we acquired another one. It's been sort of our backup. Star Lab is a fabric planetary. It's a nylon vinyl material. It inflates using a fan. It seats about 25 people on the floor. And what basically, what it comes down to is the 1980s, well, even the 1997 one's starting to show wear. We need to buy a new one. The old backup one has a few extra stars despite the use of duct tape. And essentially, what's starting to happen is the fabric is starting to break down and become sticky, and we need to do this. This was a budgeted item in the Enterprise Fund for 2014. The money is coming through a grant into the Enterprise Fund from the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. This company generously is offering us a trade-in of $1,000 towards the new one, and what we request is for you to surplus the 1981 so that it can be used as a trade-in on a new Star Lab. This is the most basic level of Star Lab. I think you got the support material and authorize the purchase of a new one.
Are there any questions?
I guess I would just make a motion to authorize the surplus trade-in and the purchase of this new Star Lab. Say it.
I have a motion in a second to authorize a surplus of the Star Lab. I actually was in that 1981 probably about that time, so it's probably time to change it. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 13, consider a motion to supplement $14,087.36 from the Building Fund to the Building Fund Budget ASN 19630. Auditors of America Dakotas, representing insurance reimbursement from Chubb Group of Insurance Companies. Darlene Johnson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Darlene Johnson from the Auditor's Office. This was the final payment on the project on the 51st Street building, a VOA building. I believe most of the work has been done now except for the debtors, so we're just asking that you supplement this final check. And the payment is being made today also.
Any questions for Darlene?
Make that motion.
Motion in a second. I believe this is the bill payment that Commissioner Barth mentioned in bills. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Darlene.
Item 14 is consider a resolution to remove weight load limits on certain bridges on the county highway system. D.J. Boothby.
Morning again, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. This is one of my favorite resolutions to propose to the commission. This year, we completed, to date, six structure replacements. We have one more that should be completed within the next few weeks. Five bridges were replaced, or six structures were replaced. We put in new structures of five bridges and one box culvert. And after this resolution passes, we will have 25 remaining bridge postings, which we will work diligently to replace or rehab. If you have any questions, I can answer them now.
How many bridges do we have on for next year's list? Do you know right offhand?
For next year's list, I think that we have six.
Okay. All right. Keep looking down. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
D.J., you mentioned one day about federal truck standards are going to, all of a sudden, put load limits on every bridge we got. Is that...
Not every bridge that we have, but it's very possible that some of our shorter-span bridges could be posted for a short haul vehicle.
This is the one with more wheels and more weight, or...
More wheels on a shorter truck, like a dump truck that has multiple axes. And we have a consultant that is performing some calculations for us right now on some of our structures for load limiting, and they're determining whether or not they believe we will have to post any of them. But as of right now, we have no official direction from FHWA on posting those bridges.
Will that change what we, after we do remove these limits, will that change anything other than the new trucks? I mean, will they be the only ones that really...
It would just be that new truck.
It won't affect anything today.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for D.J.? Look for a motion to consider the resolution on removing load limits.
So move.
Second.
The motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
For D.J. D.J., I had a note from somebody about the culvert replacement two miles west of Highway 29 on the Baltic Road. Is that project complete?
The answer, final complete, no, it's not. We had an initial contract to purchase the culvert, and the two end pieces, the flared ends, are a custom-built product, and so that takes a long time to build. And so our initial contract was to purchase the in-stock tubes and then hire a contractor to install those and then open the road. We completed that, and we just received the flared end sections just within the last week or two. And so we have been receiving bids to have a contractor install those anywhere from now until, I think, the middle of December because it's not impacting traffic or anything like that. The road is safe, and so the road is open, but no, the final work is not completed yet.
And D.J., I do remember you talking about that when we approved this, that there were no end caps available and that they would be coming in a later date because I've been down that road too a couple times, and it's pretty obvious it's not quite finished yet. So, thank you. I think we're ready to move on.
Item 15, consider a motion to authorize application for contractual grant funding from the South Dakota Weed and Pest Commission. D.J. Boothby.
The Weed and Pest Commission offers a $5,000 grant for basically filling out a one-page form, a grant application every year. We participate in this grant application, and it helps purchase our weed chemicals and then pay for some of our summer labor. So just requesting authorization to sign off on the grant application and get it sent to up here.
Any questions on that grant?
Make a motion to authorize that application. Say it.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 16, consider a motion to declare the following highway department equipment as surplus for sale and authorize the auditor to publish a notice of sale. 11985 Oshkosh with plows, 11987 Oshkosh with plows, 11976 Heister nine-wheel compactor, 1200 IH dump truck, 11999 Bobcat 763H, 21973 Ford Tractors Model 2000, 1 Clark Forklift C500 Y60, and 12003 Dodge Pickup. D.J. Boothby.
This request is very similar to a request that we made a few months ago that was denied at the time for further investigation on other departments' possible usage of some of the equipment. We were able to transfer one of the pickup trucks to another department, and so now we have nine pieces of equipment that are currently being stored outside in our parking lot. They have been replaced, and the replaced equipment is in service, and so these are offering no use to our department. We estimate that the approximate value of the combined nine pieces of equipment is around $30,000. We are requesting the surplus and then sell the items on Iron Planet.
Okay. Any questions for D.J.? Commissioner Kelly?
D.J., on the Bobcat, and we have one, but I don't know anything about them, clearly how to drive it. But is $2,800 a lot of hours on a Bobcat? I mean, I understand those machines maintain their value for years and years, but is it because they continue to run for years and years?
$2,800 is not a lot of hours on one of these machines. This does have some pretty significant mechanical problems with it, and it's an older machine. It's a 1999. But the reason that we are getting rid of it is because of mechanical problems. We actually asked Lloyd Olson if he would want, he came and looked at it. We asked him if he would like to transfer it over to his department because he was, I think he has a Bobcat in his budget for next year maybe, and he said, no, that's in worse condition than the one that they're trying to replace.
Do you have to disclose those on the Iron Planet?
Any other questions for D.J.?
Iron Planet does come and do an inspection of all the equipment and then provide details on their inspection findings.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion to declare these items surplus and for sale.
Is there a second?
Say it.
I have a motion in a second to declare surplus of highway department. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 17, consider a motion to accept U.S. Department of Transportation and National Highway Traffic Safety Administration grant funds for the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office in the amount of $181,059.61. I don't see Aaron here.
Kirsten is going to address this.
Thank you, Commissioners. Kirsten Katmire, Chief Civil Deputy State's Attorney for the State's Attorney's Office. Aaron was unable to be here this morning because of another work commitment, but he asked me to brief you on this particular item. You may recall a couple, several weeks ago, I should say, Aaron sought authorization from you to pursue some grant money with the U.S. Department of Transportation and National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to procure some help targeted to driving while-intoxicated cases and related vehicle cases that the State's Attorney's Office commonly has. We've done this in the past, funding a DWI prosecutor. Oh, it would have been about four years ago now, I believe. Fortunately, we got great news that through that grant process, the U.S. Department of Transportation has agreed to fund two vehicular crimes DUI prosecutors in our office, as well as a legal office assistant in relation to these files. We've all talked about extensively. We've looked at the figures for these sorts of offenses, how they've really taken off in our community, and this is a great opportunity for the county to get some assistance in this area, in this particular area, without incurring... in this particular area, uh, without incurring, uh, its own costs. This is basically a pass-through grant. Uh, I believe it's revenue and expense neutral. Uh, so, uh, I guess at this point, uh, we would ask for, uh, the commission's blessing in accepting these, uh, grant funds, uh, the details in your packet of, of how much that is, what the particular obligations are. But really, there are no obligations beyond reporting, things like that, that go along with this. Other than that, uh, the county, uh, is, is basically getting this from, from the federal, uh, government and, and the state, through the state. So we'd ask for authorization to accept that.
Commissioner Kelly?
Um, the one that we hired four years ago, now, this, you can't use these funds to pay that position, can you?
Uh, no. Well, you could, but you'd have to convert that position. What's basically happening with this is this is a, 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 a certain term, and I believe it's a three-year term on this. So what will happen is, is these people will be recruited for that express three-year term. Now, what happened with our last prosecutor is through expansion of, of our workforce generally, eventually, they did convert to a full-time permanent position. But the authorization that we're asking for here is with that understanding that at this point in time, that is a three-year grant, and there's a finite end to that at this point.
Uh, experience says that they don't go away at the end of three years, but, I mean, I'm, I'm fully in favor of this, but, uh, I think we gotta understand we got nearly a $200,000 commitment that will come, will drop on us in four years. Is that correct?
Uh, we're not obligated to keep those people on. I, I would say.
It doesn't happen, though.
I understand, but it'll have to come back before you for express approval. So.
Great.
This is a grant obligation for three years, around $180,000 a year. Commissioner Pecus?
One of the issues that happened four years ago is that I think they wanted one of our prosecutors actually to be the, for lack of a better term, data miner, to go ahead and put everything together and send it up to peer. Marty Jackley stepped forward and said that they would be facilitating all that extra IT work. Is that consistent with this grant?
Yeah, that's consistent with what I'm understanding. Also, this time, the legal office assistant help is part of that too, and I think we envisioned in our office making that, those sort of tasks more, more of a assistant task so the prosecutor can devote more courtroom time.
I didn't think that was the best use of an attorney's time is to plug in data, so.
Any other questions? Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve this.
Madam Chair, I do have one comment.
Traffic safety grant.
I just would comment, I totally agree with Dick over there.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Next item is Minnehaw County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? I'll just give one, and that was, um, that the joint planning meeting between Lincoln County, Minnehaw County, and the city of Sioux Falls met this morning at 7:00 to discuss our planning and zoning project. Um, the direction that we are going into our third meeting would be, excuse me, the department heads from the planning and zonings came this morning to our meeting. Excuse me. And, um, our direction for next month was that they, we gave them four different specific permits and asked them to come back next month to our December meeting with a checklist that could be used in all three counties. So if you came to Minnehaw County and said, "I want to, this conditional use permit, here is a list of all the things you need to do, and do I need to go to the city on this conditional use? Do I need to go down to Lincoln County?" And so we've got four different projects that we picked out for our planning directors to work together cooperatively to, um, try to come up with a checklist for those. And then we also asked them to come up with, um, a plan on meeting monthly or every six weeks with an agenda for the department heads of those three entities to just meet and make sure they're staying on the same page with stuff. So that was kind of what we accomplished, um, today. This was our second meeting. We also have a jail group and we have a GIS group, so, um, any other liaison reports? All right. Is there any new business? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, uh, in December, Minnehaw County will host the Southeast District, uh, meeting, and, uh, I guess if the commission would concur with me, I'd ask that we have it at the fairgrounds, perhaps in the Nordstrom Building, and, and show our new Pipestone Building to attendees, and, uh, I guess I'd ask our staff then to make those arrangements.
Okay. Is there any comments?
Yeah.
I think it sounds like a good idea. Okay. Any other new business? Any old business?
Um, we've been talking about cooperation with the city, and I guess I'm glad to see the Chairman of the Sioux Falls City Council here to observe our proceedings, and welcome him.
Yeah. I have two old business items. One would be to congratulate, uh, Commissioner Pecus on his upcoming judgeship. He will be staying with us probably through the end of this year. And in January, we will be appointing a new, January, February, whenever we get around to it, appointing, um, a new commissioner to his seat. Um, I would like to maybe consider putting it on the agenda for next week for discussion as to.
I won't be here next week because I'm stuck in trial, but I don't have a lot of say.
But you won't have a lot of say anyway.
You don't count any. I don't count.
So, um, I think if it's okay with the other commissioners, we could put that on for discussion for next week on how we want to move forward with, um, selecting a new commissioner. This will be, no. I'm looking at Ken for direction.
I'm just looking at some scheduling issues and wondering if perhaps that discussion would be better served for the following week. We're running on a very short week with my schedule.
Okay. Okay. What's the date of the following week? It's not, it's before Thanksgiving, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
23rd.
Okay. So maybe we put that on the 23rd, then?
Okay.
Okay. We'll put that for, um, discussion on replacement.
I would suggest that we.
On 25th.
25th, excuse me.
I, I would suggest that we ask, uh, Commissioner Benega if he has any comments to write him down so we can consider him at that time.
I tried to catch him last night, and I did not catch him, so, um, Ken?
Well, again, one of the reasons to, one of the reasons, uh, I'm suggesting that, I know, as you know, Commissioner Benega will be out for a little while, and there may be an opportunity, uh, once he's, uh, able to, you know, we've done that in the past, is to, uh, have, have them participate by a teleconference, and, and we'd like to make that arrangements. And, uh, I'm just not sure we can accomplish that by the 18th, and that's why I would suggest the 25th in order to allow that to happen.
Good idea.
Yep.
Isn't there a new state law, Ken, that also requires us to make sure that media can get access? Yeah.
Yep. Yep. We have to give notice on to where they can come and participate, and quite frankly, the last time we did, the notice that we gave is, "Come and participate here," because